Today is Tuesday, April 7th, and this is an episode of the Hollywood Squares. So we'd like to welcome the presidents of Akushnet to Akushnet's first episode. Trying to find some humor in the current situation, I guess, folks. But this is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, April 3rd, and we are meeting remotely from various locations using the Zoom technology to have our selectmen meeting and to socially isolate for each other. I don't know that this is going to make great television, but this is the reality of the time we're currently in. So we will, we're having a board of selectmen meeting. We're bringing it to you at home, and hopefully this is useful to you in this current format. So first order of business, we've got a consent agenda for the meeting Tuesday, April 7th. That agenda did anticipate that this meeting would be held the way it is. Can I get a motion, Mr. DeRoche, to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second?
Second.
Andy, go ahead. I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I was going to say, in the minutes from March 20th, 2020, and August 6th, 2019, regular and executive sessions.
And I will second your motions. I did, I did call into Mrs. Leonard a couple of minor edits to the minutes. None of them changed the content really, just some minor changes to the documents. So I'm sure she could show you those if you wanted to see them, but none of them really changed the message delivered by the minutes, so.
Okay, understood. Yep.
Okay, so all in favor, minutes have voted.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Meeting mail, anything? I don't think so. Nothing that I've received. Appointments? I guess the appointment is just a discussion of the PJ hearing meeting and the continuation of that meeting. That meeting was supposed to be held, was it the 24th of March? Was the continuation of the original meeting? I was at the Ford Middle School on the 24th of March at 5:00, just to let anybody that shows up know that the meeting was going to be continued. Nobody showed up, but I think everybody got word that it had been canceled. But posted notices on the building that that meeting has been continued to April 28th at 6:00. So we're hoping at this point that that date is possible, but really don't know. I think the state continues to be under a lockdown until March 4th is at the official date, so.
May 4th.
May 4th, yeah.
Sorry, May 4th, I said, May 4th. So I don't know whether that date's possible or not, but as, you know, we've got three weeks, so as we get closer to that date, we'll make another decision if we have to.
Very good. Yep.
So next item on the agenda is the coronavirus updates. Ms. Hebert, anything you wanted to bring up on that? I did, I did, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I was gonna say, I did reach out to the fire chief who told me that there are seven identified cases of coronavirus in the town of Akushnet. Seven known and identified cases of coronavirus in the town of Akushnet. So coronavirus is here.
That's up from 5 yesterday, so two new cases.
This is supposed to be the week where it really breaks in a lot of places, so. Fingers crossed. Anything else on that topic?
I don't have anything specific. I know we left this kind of as a continuing item on the agenda so that as things come up, we can update people. I do have a few things that were just recently passed that I'll be sending over to you guys so that we can look it over and start making some decisions. I know some of those items are on our agenda for tonight to talk about the annual town meeting and the election. I'm looking at the dates, but nothing specific for you right now.
I needed a pad and I didn't have one, so my apologies. All right, so speaking of possible date changes and things coming up that we need to consider, we've got Mrs. Labonte, the Akushnet Town Clerk, talking about the annual town meeting and our annual town election, which are both dates on the calendar. So why don't, if you could, Mrs. Labonte, talk about first the existing dates and maybe what we should be thinking about doing?
Okay. The very first that we have is the annual town election, I'm sorry, town meeting, and that's scheduled for May 11th. Then after that is the following Saturday, May 16th is the annual town election. I've had some conversations briefly with Julie and Roger, you and I have spoken also, in that I personally would like to see the town meeting and the elections moved ahead. And the reason for that is, I realize right now there are no contested races for the town election. However, the issue lies with being able to have the staff to be able to pull off the election. And we are required by Mass. General Law that we do need to hold an election. So, and along with the election, I have tellers that work the town meeting, and trying to get staff to do that in this particular environment is not going to be easy.
Great.
Did you say something?
I mean, the other challenge we've got, I think we, you know, as part of this, what happens at the town meeting is the approval of the annual town budget. And with the coronavirus situation we're dealing with, a lot of meetings have been, you know, the board of selectmen, we're not having the budget meetings we'd normally be having. The finance committee's not having the budget hearings they'd normally be having. So the whole process this year has stalled as a result of this coronavirus. So I would think at this point, you know, we could talk about both the town meeting and the election, but I think, you know, town meeting first. I think we should probably move the town meeting as far out into June as we can. And I saw that the information you provided, Mrs. Labonte, regarding, you know, the fact we've got to have it by June 30th. So let's maybe look at a calendar and figure out what makes sense in June. And we want it on a Monday.
Yeah.
I would say, just to give us a little cushion, either the 15th or the 22nd? And then that leaves us one more Monday if it had to be continued or, you know, well, we could continue it anytime.
Right, right.
But any suggestions as to when you'd like to see it?
I would probably say, let's go for the 22nd. I'd really like to see it the 29th.
I don't object to that. I'm just trying to give us a little, I'm just trying to give us a little room. I don't object to the 29th. If you feel strong, we should be doing it, we should be doing it there. No objection. I'm just, that puts us right on the wire with the.
It does.
No, I don't know what could go wrong, but, Mr. DeRoche?
Are you talking about the election or the town meeting?
Town meeting, town meeting first, and then we'll talk about the election.
On the 29th of June?
Yes.
Well, that puts, that puts the election then on 4th of July weekend.
No, not, no, we can put the election, we can move that before the town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Is that accurate? We looked.
That is correct. Yes, we can move it.
To, sorry, are we looking to have the election before or after the town meeting? Just because I know that your information, Pam, that you sent us said that the election could be no later than June 30th.
Correct.
So if we're looking to still keep the election after the town meeting, we might want to move it to like the 22nd so that we could have the election that Saturday, the 27th. Otherwise, I think we wouldn't have time for it because, you know, we have that June 30th deadline. Just something to consider.
Mr. DeRoche has got his hand up.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I was just listening.
I don't think personally, it doesn't, it's more what's comfortable for you because you're handling more of the finances. So if you want to move town meeting before the election, that's not an issue for me.
Well, the 22nd still gives us about 10 weeks before, from today.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, if we want to follow that bylaw that we passed where the election's the Saturday after the town meeting, then the 22nd would work. It gives us 10 weeks to try to get everything in order and in line, the budgets, the articles, which we still pretty much haven't been determined at all. I mean, we have some preliminary numbers, but how they're going to change and what's going to happen over the next few weeks, you know, will give us more information as we go on to make a determination.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I mean, the change we made last year was we moved the, we moved the election after the town meeting. And I think that was, that was done for, you know, so the new selectmen coming in wouldn't...
But have a clean slate.
Working on the budget process and the articles would be at town meeting to speak about the budget and, you know, they've been involved in the process. And it wasn't fair bringing a new selectmen into that process and ask them to endorse things that they may not have a good understanding of. So I, you know, in a perfect world, we could, I like that system because I think it makes sense. I don't, given the circumstances, I don't think we have to do it that way. You know, but to the extent we can, if we could, if we could keep town meeting on the 22nd and make the election on the 27th, I think we could pull that off. Is there, if we go with the 29th, I think we clearly got to put the election before that. And I don't object to that. I don't object to that. So is there a reason you'd like the town meeting on the 29th?
No, I'm just, I, having the town meeting on the 22nd and having the election on the 20th would be a bit much for my office. Right now, it's my.
22nd and the 27th is what we're talking about.
Right, right. That would be doable. It's going to be tight because I have an employee that has already requested to be out for the full 12 weeks under the, I don't even know what it was called, the F-something.
Family Medical Leave Act.
Yes, exactly.
FMLA.
Right. And then I have another individual that has some health issues that she cannot work in the office until this is pretty much a guarantee that it's gone. So we're looking at myself and a part-timer that's 20 hours a week. So to pull off an election and a town meeting pretty much by ourselves, that's going to be a lot in that short period of time. Having full staff, not a problem at all.
So could the 22nd and the 27th work for you? Would you like to divide those dates up a little bit more?
I would like to divide them up. Could we do the 15th and the 27th?
Meeting on the 15th?
Your meeting on the 15th. Okay.
Julie, what do you think about that?
Relax.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, to do town meeting on the 15th and then the election on the 27th, that works for me.
Yeah, that's fine on my end.
Okay.
I mean, my, the comment, the comment I would make is, I think, I think of the two, we want to make sure we get, we want them both to be right. The town meeting, the town meeting's got to be, we got to have the budget together, we got to have all the articles together. I think it's, we want to make sure we've got the town meeting together. We want to make sure we do the town meeting right. So I would, I would say if we're pushing one out as late as possible, we should be pushing the town meeting out as late as possible and doing the election before that potentially.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't object to the 15th and the 27th, provided Ms. Hebert's comfortable with the fact that we can pull off town meeting by the 15th.
Well, how about, and I don't want to push it too far. What if we did the 13th, the Saturday, and the 22nd for town meeting? Oh, but see, you want to have town meeting before the election.
Yeah.
Ideally, but we don't, ideally, but.
Right.
We're dealing with some unusual circumstances, so I think we've got to do what's best for town, you know, the old model was always, we put a new selectmen in, and the selectmen started serving and went to town meeting. So that is the model that worked for years and years and years.
Right.
It's important that we get town meeting right and, you know, and the selectmen coming in, I mean, Mr. Warnar's the name on the ballot, Mr. Warnar understands, so he's not, he's not brand new to it. I, you know, I think we're in good hands with Mr. Warnar taking that slot. And I, you know, I know he'll get himself up the speed very quickly on anything that's going to be on the agenda. So I think, I think we need to deliver a good town meeting, and let's focus on what gives us the most time to deliver a good town meeting. Ms. Hebert, what, I mean, what's realistic for that?
So are you still talking about putting the election ahead of town meeting?
The election could be first, yes.
I think the only concern that we've talked about with that is over the moderator.
Oh, that's right.
So there's that.
So that, you know.
So there's that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, the continuity was the main part that we talked about when we moved the election to the Saturday after town meeting, but where we don't have anyone going for the moderator position. And it's obviously a huge, a huge position for a town meeting. And this is going to be a funky year with town meeting being pushed back and everything. I, that would be my only hesitation is not having anyone ready for that role for town meeting, where, especially where it could be so quick.
So then I would, I would say, let's go with the 22nd for town meeting, the Monday, and the 27th for the election.
Agreed. That's what I was going to circle back to.
Okay. And the other issue that I also wanted to speak with you about is, we are allowed to modify the hours for the town, for the town election this year due to the legislation that the governor's office put through. So I know one town has no contested races, very similar to ours. I have heard of write-in campaigns, but the only write-in campaigns that I'm hearing about are those that were originally had pulled the papers, they were the incumbents, and they are, they just didn't have the time to get the signatures back in to me before the deadline. So it's not as though I have anybody new that has been talking about running. So if we can also take a look, and we don't have to do it at this meeting, we can do it at your next meeting, take a look at possibly doing like a 10 to 2 for the election. That's, another community is doing that, that again, has no contested races. We will also be offering early voting for all voters. It's, it will be very similar to what we just experienced in March. All they have to do is call into our office for an application for an early voting ballot, or we also will still have absentee voting. But there are going to be some options to make sure that everyone that wants to vote is able to vote. So if, that, again, we don't have to vote on the time change today, but that is something that I'd like you to all think about for the next meeting.
So Pam, there's no contested races in the school, school committee?
No, no, we did have six individuals originally. Three of them pulled out and one decided not to pull papers. So.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's then, let's then go with the June 22nd and 27th. We've got plenty of time if we need to make a change to that. If for some reason it doesn't feel like that makes sense, we've got time to make revisions. I think we're acting on this early enough that we can make adjustments if necessary. Do we need to vote that proposed change?
Yes, yes.
Mr. DeRoche, can I get a motion to change the date of the town meeting to June 22nd and the date of the Akushnet town election to June 27th?
I make a motion to change the town meeting to Monday, June 22nd, 2020, and the town election to Saturday, June 27th, 2020.
Perfect. Second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, there's nobody left. Okay. Passes. Okay, and again, if for some reason, you know, we made a decision here, if for some reason those dates don't work, Mrs. Labonte, if you think you've got issues, staffing issues or timing issue, whatever, bring it back. I think we've got plenty of time to make whatever adjustments we need to make.
Okay, I appreciate that. My biggest concern right now is being able to have the people at the election on Election Day.
Work, the workers.
Right. And to have those individuals available to do the testing of the machines with me. That's two individuals working together in, you know, our back closet, but we also have to make that available to the public as well. So I usually do the testing about a week before, and I'm hoping that, God willing, this is all going to pass over and it won't be an issue. But you will be the first to know if I am running into any problems. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome to stay on the call, or you can watch us live, or it'd be kind of neat to have you watching it on TV just to see if this makes any sense at all as a viewer at home. I'm curious to know, but.
I will put it on right now. How's that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Labonte. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal '21 budget articles discussion and where we're going and how we're tracking and what the plan forward is, I suppose, because we're well behind where we'd be in normal circumstances. So, Ms. Hebert, I'll see you, please.
Yeah, so this has been a tough year anyway, before the pandemic, trying to get the budget together, trying to, you know, we were still in the middle of meeting with all the department heads to go through their budgets and, you know, a lot of the town administrators, we've all been talking and anticipating a lot of issues with our FY21 budgets as this has been progressing. So one of the major concerns that we have is the potential revenue shortfall that we will face for FY21. We haven't received solid numbers yet, but we're all anticipating that state revenue will be decreased from what our initial projections were. You know, when other similar economic situations have happened in the past, you know, for 9/11, I believe there was a 10% cut from the state during the recession, there was a 20% cut in the state. So what we've all been looking at and in the numbers that we've been receiving, it seems to be leading to about a 5% potential decrease from the state in revenue. For the town of Akushnet, that's $410,000.
So you think state aid, state aid could potentially be cut by 5%?
Yes, we need to plan for it because it seems like that's a genuine possibility. The, I know a lot of the House Ways and Means had a meeting today that got kind of difficult for people to follow, so I don't know the results of it, but, you know, that's what they're discussing. We've been hearing, you know, the possible discussion of cutting and 5% seems to be the number. Knowing too that the town as a whole, there are a lot of people who are in tough economic situations, you know, unemployment is going up. We don't know how that will impact our taxpayers from making payments. A lot of our local receipts that we base our budget on are, you know, penalties and interest and, you know, motor vehicle excise and fees and fines. And if this continues for a longer period than we hope, all of those revenues could be impacted for the town. So it seems fiscally, you know, it's not a good idea for us to continue with our FY21 budget as we originally planned before the pandemic. I think at this point, we need to evaluate what we have and what we actually might be getting for true numbers for revenue next year. Again, hoping it's not as bad as we're planning, but we need to plan for it. So at the end of the week, last week, I talked to the department heads. I asked them to give me new budgets for FY21, essentially one budget to level fund expenses to FY20 of the current year, and another budget to show me a 10% reduction for expenses only, leaving salaries.
Non-payroll issue, non-payroll.
Non-payroll, right, leaving salaries but looking at expenses. And at the same time, you know, we have been getting requests for capital. I've been gathering them for you guys, for the selectmen. I haven't been able to give you a complete list yet with the articles, but what I've advised the department heads is, you know, we're probably going to need to cut all capital expenses for this year. We have a little over a million dollars of free cash, and if at all possible, I would like to hold on to that million dollars of free cash as a buffer for the town if we have a revenue shortfall even bigger than what we're planning for, for next year. So everybody's working on making cuts to their budget, balancing that with estimated cuts in revenue. The department heads have been fantastic in trying to be creative in ways that they can make cuts. Obviously, we work really hard to keep trim budgets as it is, but, you know, if this continues for a long time, things like travel and training might be things that could be cut because we might still be in quarantine, you know, not having meetings with larger than groups of 10 people. So, you know, I've asked everyone to give me the budgets along with a narrative of what that cut would mean for their department. So I'm getting that all together for you, for the board of selectmen, so you can review it. But I think for us going into next year, doing this process, cutting our budget, and then looking to save our free cash, if we don't, if we don't expend any of the free cash, we don't transfer to stabilization, it'll roll into next year and it'll, it'll roll into free cash. So our number for next year potentially would be even greater, and that would be kind of a safe fund for us if, again, if revenues, a 5% cut from state aid is $410,000. If all of a sudden they decide to cut 10% instead of 5, that's another $410,000 that we need, we'd be able to pull it from that free cash that we've saved. So that's, that's what I'm looking at doing. And again, the department heads have been great in getting those numbers for me. So as soon as they have it all together, I'll get it out to you. But that's, that's what the plan is for now, and if there are any suggestions from any of the board of selectmen, I'm very happy to take that into consideration. I mean, this is your budget, this is all of our budget, but this seemed to be a consensus among other towns as well, just trying to be fiscally prudent for our residents.
Comments on that?
It wasn't good news.
Clearly, clearly. Agreed.
I mean, the fact, the fact, it's a fluid situation. What we determine in the next two weeks could change in the following two weeks. You know, we're going to have a good understanding of what the townspeople can pay after May 1st, see how our revenues come in at the next, you know, tax payments for real estate taxes. That'll give us a little bit of an idea. You were talking about the State House. I know they had a meeting today that they had to cancel because they couldn't get this technology to work, and they've postponed it till next Tuesday. Now, they're going to come out with some preliminary numbers next Tuesday, as you mentioned, about what the decrease is going to be in town and city aid from the state, you know, what their projections are for the revenues. Because you got to imagine, they're taking a bath with sales tax going down, meals tax going down, I mean, right there. Because you've got to imagine they're taking a bath with sales tax going down, meals tax going down. I mean, right there, those two. Hotel tax.
Nobody's, nobody's buying cars.
Right, right. Rental cars, hotels, I mean, right across the board, all the revenue that comes from those things is disappeared. And we don't know how long it's going to disappear for. It could be another month, two months. So, you know, as one of the select board members, I think we should just take the smaller steps, get an understanding and then, you know, as we come toward that town meeting or even a month before, you know, when we got another month, that's May, middle of May, hopefully we have an understanding there, you know, about what we're going to be able to have is our revenue.
Yeah, but the change, well, we've got to have our agenda ready, but with the change we just made, we've got, I think you said 10 weeks and so we've got some time, but there's so many variables, so many things that are unknown. I'm sorry, Mr. DeRoche, do you continue or you're all set?
No, I think Pam raised her hand, but she's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, how do we look on TV?
I'm sorry. This is a perfect opportunity for me to talk about the importance briefly of the census, the federal census. We've discussed it at meetings previously and how important it is that individuals complete it. They are very aggressive sending out mailings. You're going to get them pretty much every week. You're asking individuals to go online to fill it out. That, the more we have, the more responses that we get, the better our sources of income are going to be from the federal government. So, because we are paid annually for the next 10 years based on the number of people that respond now. So for someone that has a four-year-old daughter and they don't normally put them on the census, that child is worth about $2,700 to $2,900. Okay, every person is, it costs, is the dollar amount that it equates to. So if you take that by the number of residents that we have and those that don't fill in the census annually, we're missing a lot of great revenue. So I want people to pay attention to what's going on right now and realize that they, this is one step that they can help their town that isn't going to cost them a dime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, the general comment, and Ms. Hebert and I spoke earlier in the week with regard to the budget and where we are, we talked about capital items and we've got some capital items that, that we need, but, you know, could probably put off. I know we've tried, we've tried to avoid a special town meeting. We haven't done an October meeting in a, in a few years, but given the circumstances, we may need to, again, that, that maybe we defer all capital purchases from the, you know, the June town meeting to the, to the October town meeting and retain, retain that cash. You know, and if, if it looks like the circumstances are going to be better than they could be, we could, we could make those capital expenditures, you know, in the fall rather than now. So I guess I'd ask for that evaluation as well, that we look at the list of articles for capital items and we look at the items that could be deferred. And I know the work, you know, there's, roof repairs are always necessary. We don't want to defer roof repairs, but there were some other capital items that I think, you know, could be, could be kicked out and should be kicked out. You know, in, in things we would have bought normally that, that, you know, given the circumstances, we probably shouldn't. So let's look at that list and figure out what we need to do and what we can do later. I think the other, the other comment I made is, you know, we really want to preserve our employees. We're not talking about layoffs. We don't want to talk about layoffs. This is a, you know, hopefully a short-term impact on the town of Acushnet and I think we want to look to cut whatever expenses we can, including capital items. And the last thing we want to do is, is, is let anyone go based on projected cuts in revenue. So we'll do it when we have to. I think we've got a decent level of free cash. I think we've got a decent stabilization fund. We used to call that the rainy day fund. If it's not raining now, it never will rain. I don't want to go into stabilization, but I think if, if there's ever a reason to go into stabilization for an unusual circumstance, we're there now. So those would be my observations. Ms. Hebert, let's go with the, go with the, you know, various budget models and see what that looks like. Mr. DeRoche, is your hand up this time?
Yes, it is. I was just wondering, what is a stabilization fund approximately? Is that like the $2 million fund, 2.7 million?
It's around 3 million right now. So we've added a lot. We've added probably, I want to say 1.6 million since I've been here. And so we're around 3 million. I could pull up the number, but I'm, I'm afraid I'll lose you guys. But it's, it's a very good number. It's something that we've worked hard for over the last few years and I agree with Mr. Cabral. This is, it's a rainy day fund. It's raining. It's pouring out right now. But I think it's important that we've already set ourselves up to have it. It's a good number. If we need to use it, we're going to use it. I'd still like to avoid that if we, you know, if we can make do with cutting our budgets and using the million dollars of free cash that we have to help get us through at least the beginning of next year. Hopefully then this all subsides and we don't have to touch any of the stabilization. That's fantastic for us, but if we needed it, it's there and we have a good cushion with that, so.
Thank you. Going to get revised budget numbers. You'll provide a summary of what those all look like. Mr. DeRoche, anything else on this topic?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. The Kirsarish PPA agreement, I'm probably going to hold that to the next meeting. I, we do have comments from our attorney. Nothing dramatic, I don't think. We did a couple of errors in the contract this afternoon. I, I saw you email me, Ms. Hebert, with those changes. We, the project we were buying into, they referenced the project in New Bedford. We wanted to buy into the project in Acushnet and our, and our discount rate was 12 and 1/2% rather than the 15%. So there were a couple of errors in that that were kind of glaring. So I guess I, and Mr. Gaspar is not here, so I don't know what, if this is an important decision, important vote, I'd rather Mr. Gaspar were here to, before we move that forward. So you know, I think we've given Kirsarish some pretty good assurances that we want to do this. We do want to do it, but our agreement with them's got to be right and
Right, right.
and we need to understand what it is we're signing on to. So I would suggest we table that for the next agenda. Mr. DeRoche, if you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I am. We can table.
I don't think we need a vote. Let's, let's just move that forward to the next agenda. Cable Committee capital purchase is the next item and I think we have some invoices. Detailing, Ms. Hebert, are you going to present on that? Someone from the Cable Committee going to talk about that?
Let me just see if I have it. I'm not sure if somebody was planning on talking about it.
Nick was supposed to talk about it, but where he's having trouble with the microphone, he might not be able to get it in.
Yeah, let me get those, let me get those items in front of me. I know I've got, I know I've got the invoices. Let me just find them on the right screen. I got it here.
Basically, I want to say that what John Goldner had mentioned to me a couple of weeks ago, because we had had it on another meeting, and John had mentioned that there was, there's one for 1215, 1,000.
Yeah, I've got them, I've got them in front of me. I can, I can comment. 1215 plus installation, it's just under $1,700 and there's another one that totals about $7,700, so.
Right, but that one, that's what he wanted to talk about because their original price was 59.95 and then with the installation, that went up to the 76.70. But under the new Tech Tricaster Mini Bundle with the control service and case is 79.95. So Nick wanted to explain why we should do the 79.95 versus the 59.95. I mean, we have the money. It's, I mean, it's trying to help us do what we're doing right now.
I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, Mr. DeRoche, I'll let you, I'm inclined to do it. I, you know, I know that the Cable Committee and the Cable Team is constantly looking to upgrade the product we deliver to the residents of Acushnet. The money they're spending, they've been very conservative with the money they get that they spend comes out of cable fees, so it's not, it's not tax money. I know they've been, over the years, very, very conservative with the money. So I'm not sure I understand the stuff on the list. I'm not sure if he explains it to me. I'm going to understand the stuff on the list, but I know we've got a dedicated group doing a good job and I'm inclined to support the purchase. At, you know, again, $9,400, I'm comfortable with, you know, they're looking to buy some equipment to support their operation and I'm comfortable supporting that and.
I, I see no issue with the purchases. As you mentioned, this money isn't taxpayer money. It's coming out of the fee we, we acquire from Comcast. Is that correct?
Yes, it's built into the cable. It's built into the cable bills, yes.
Correct, correct. So, you know, I'll trust them if they say they need to buy this. They don't seem to be spending money left and right. But, you know, bring up, bring the equipment up to speed that we need so we can produce these, produce the cable that we do. I have no problems with that.
I get a motion then, Mr. DeRoche. I think I added $9,400. Is that, is that correct, Ms. Leonard? Is that accurate? Ms. Hebert, do you have those? I'm jumping between screens and.
No, me too.
Yeah, so 1685 and the 79.95. Well, it'd be a little bit more than that because he's, instead of the 59.95, they wanted the new one for 79.95.
8,000, yep.
Right, so it actually makes it a little bit more than that.
So.
I'd probably say, I mean, I don't have a computer, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but in the span of, I don't know, 8,000?
Not to exceed 10, not to exceed 10,000.
I would do that, yeah.
Mr. DeRoche, can I get a motion to support the capital purchases laid out by the Committee and allow not to exceed $10,000?
Well, this is where the question lies though, because there's that $2,000 difference I'm, I'm seeing. So I see an invoice that says 76.70, but Nick is asking for 79.95, so that's more than the invoice. So I got to assume that the $7,600 invoice is going to bounce to 9,600.
You don't think the 10's enough?
Huh? Right, that's what I'm saying. And then they want the other 1,700 bucks. So that brings us, you know, if we, if we make that $12,000, I think they can purchase both those things, you know.
Why don't, why, let's make the motion then at $12,000 and maybe, maybe to schedule them for the next meeting, Ms. Hebert, just so they can explain what this is. I mean, I don't want to hold them back. I'm comfortable that, that they need what they're proposing, but let's bring them in next time, maybe to give us an explanation as to what they're doing.
If, if we approve 12 grand and they don't, and they spend 10, I mean, it's.
Yeah, agree, agree.
I don't want, I don't want to give them, I don't want to give them, say, $10,000 and they go, Jesus, we need 12 grand. We need 11.9 or 11.8, whatever it is.
Oh, I see the other two here. I see it, yeah.
So that's, that's the only question.
So let's get a motion, a motion to not to exceed $12,000 for the items laid out on the invoices or the purchase orders we've been provided.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Back to the agenda. Town administrative goals and objectives for the next year. I gave you mine, Ms. Hebert. Mr. DeRoche, did you provide yours?
Well, my, my list was pretty short. Get through the coronavirus.
Yeah.
Of course, PJ Keating is always at the top of the list. I'd have to look at what I wrote again, but right now that.
But you did provide, you provided the list.
Of course, the budget, get through the town meeting. You know, my, my goal was short-term, kind of. It wasn't.
PJ Keating was your other one, too.
Right, right. PJ Keating, town budget. You know, town meeting, get through that, you know. It was a short year, you know.
I provided a list as well. I don't recall what was on and I assumed, I, what I'd like to have is a meeting where we reconcile our wish lists. You know, the three of us with you. Has Mr. Gaspar provided his list yet?
No.
Okay, I had, I had asked him to do that for today, so I don't. Mr. DeRoche?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, from our previous town administrator, we had a list that was a great wish list. But, you know, when you start putting in 25, 30 things to try to accomplish in a year, I've learned in my first year that that, that's an unrealistic goal. It truly is. Like, you know, we need to like pick out five major ones.
Yeah, that's what we'd ask. That's what we'd try.
And then, and then try to achieve those because every week, every two weeks, something comes up that, you know, slows you down in these other areas. So shortlist, definitely, my top three, we're on there. We can compare it to the other select, you know, to you, Roger, and to Mr. Gaspar's list and hash it out. But my, my whole idea is to make a shortlist of achievable things that we can do.
My list was the same. I think, you know, maybe, I don't, I got it. I could get it if I needed to, but I'd probably lose the connection. Four, five, six items. I mean, just, just trying to keep, Ms. Hebert, focused on the, on the things that are important to us rather than, you know, the list of 30 items and, you know, you've got, you've got a list of 30 items, we acknowledge, but these are, these are the five that we'd like to see progress on. And I, I think your contract requires us to do that, to focus you on the things we want to see accomplished. So, so just trying to, to do that. And I, my list was four, five, six items.
I mean, we still have the position of town accountant that we need to address, you know. I mean, we were getting close to it and this whole COVID-19 situation is, you know, stalled us for a few months.
We anywhere on that, Ms. Hebert? Is that, I know we had some applications.
Yeah, so Mr. Gaspar had volunteered to work with me to get the, go through the list and work on interviewing. I talked to him today about it. We'll be, we'll be discussing it later this week. It's just been a little bit difficult with the pandemic, you know, it's, it's not easy to interview people anymore. So it's kind of caused a challenge, but I'm planning to meet with Mr. Gaspar, go through the list of candidates and kind of take it from there. It's challenging.
Let's, let's kick this out to the next agenda as well. I'd like, I'd like to be at a point where we could reconcile the lists that come in from the three selectmen and give you definitive, definitive goals for the coming year. And I think there's going to be, based on what I'm hearing, Mr. DeRoche, say it sounds like there's some overlap between our lists as I expected.
That's correct. I'm sure there is some overlap and, you know, we can iron it out.
Patriot Half Marathon date change, existing event, road race, we'd approved. It was scheduled for, I don't know when, but given.
Technically in June. He, he has been texting me and emailing me about moving it till October, I mean, September, I'm sorry. And the only thing about that one is that it kind of coincides with, oops, am I, um?
I can see you. I can hear. Oh, now I can't.
What the hell?
There you go.
Um, it kind of coincides with the Labor Day road race at the schools. But it's, it's not the same exact day. So I'm thinking as long as Jerry's okay with it, the fire chief and the police chief are okay with it right now, we'll have to, have to kind of see, but he, you know, this Mr. Walter keeps emailing me and calling me and asking to make sure it's okay. I don't know. I mean.
I'm the only hesitation would be how disruptive it's going to be. We want people to be able to move around the town freely on Labor Day weekend. And that would be my only hesitation, how disruptive it's going to be. You know, we want people to come and go freely on Labor Day weekend and, you know, it's a, that would be my only concern, you know.
Now, you, now you had mentioned this might compete with the Acushnet road race or?
I'm just kind of trying to figure out, because usually the road race is on the Monday. It's always on Labor Day itself. This will be the Saturday right before Labor Day. So I'm kind of thinking it would be okay. The police chief and fire chief, you know, we've talked a little bit about it, but we haven't, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, so.
Are they asking for roadways to be blocked or intersections to be blocked or?
No, they don't do that. They basically, they're runners. They do like triathlon. They run from Cathedral Camp. We've never blocked. We've never blocked any roads, but Jerry Bergeron has always, you know, provided what, you know, like, they don't close the road, but they do provide, you know, whatever they need to do.
Yeah. I mean, I'm generally fine with it. It, it, you know, it's run through town before. I don't...
Oh, it's been going for years.
And I, I guess I'm fine with it, I suppose. Mr. DeRoche, you know, if we can gauge, get an opinion about whether, how disruptive it might be, but if, you know, if it's, if it's, I suspect this is not one with thousands of runners. I think they'll probably be widely dispersed and should not be an issue. Mr. DeRoche, anything else on that?
No, I'm, I'm fine with changing the date.
Okay.
If everyone agrees to it.
We get a motion then to allow them to make that date change, Mr. DeRoche to...
Yeah, what's the date change to?
Does the date change to...
Nine-five.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Nine-five.
September fifth.
September fifth. So I make a motion to change the Patriot Half Marathon date from June twentieth, twenty-twenty, to September fifth, twenty-twenty.
I'll second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Next business under new business, DPW Union Memorandum of Understanding. Ms. Hebert, do you want to lead this discussion?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up now. So we've been working with, the selectmen have been working, you know, we, we made a change to town hall recently in light of the pandemic to try to make sure that town employees felt safe, that they were able to socially distance appropriately. And so in looking at other unions, we've had concerns with DPW. You know, the, they're essential employees, so there's a high concern for if there was a need to quarantine. Right now, if all the guys are working together, if one of them has to quarantine for some reason, the entire group would essentially be out for two weeks because they've all been in close contact with each other. So a lot of the unions have been having discussions about how we can be safe, how we can keep socially distant and take whatever measures we might need to ensure that the continuity of the department can continue if somebody needs to be isolated for quarantines. So as part of this discussion, I know Mr. Gaspar actually spent a lot of time working with the DPW to try to sort through the logistics of how we can accommodate everything. And the MOU that was created over the weekend and at the end of the week last week is essentially creating two shifts of DPW workers, making sure that Group A and Group B have an even number of senior employees so that they're not overly stacked in one way or the other and making sure that all of the positions, the necessary positions, like a foreman, a water person, a sewer person, were evenly spread out and then keeping those two groups completely separate. We've all gone back and forth over a schedule to allow the employees to work with, you know, their group members while the other group is off, staying separate. And the MOU that we created essentially has Group A working one week while Group B is not working. Group A would be in charge of, you know, their regular hours during that week and if there are any calls for emergencies, if there's a water main break or some kind of overtime emergency, Group A would continue to be on call for that week while it's their week. And the reason being to keep a sanitizing procedure that would work. So obviously, the guys are all in their vehicles. They're using equipment. They're sanitizing as much as they can during the day, but the thought is that if we can keep Group A together for the same week, they can do a deep clean at the end of the week so that the next group coming in, the following week, Group B would take over and it would be their week to be on. We could try to keep everything as clean as possible. You know, we talked about a lot of different schedules during some days on, some days off. And at the end of the day, it seemed that there was somewhat of a consensus to do the one week on, one week off. And so that's what our MOA, that's, that's what our MOA outlines at this point.
Mr.? Comments or...
I'd just like to thank Mr. Gaspar for his efforts in trying to bring this all to a conclusion. I know there had been some tension, you know, I won't call it tension, but there had been some discussion about the safety of the employees and how they're going to work. And as Julie mentioned, you know, if one person became ill, you know, you're going to wipe out the whole DPW for two weeks. So by splitting them up, coming to this conclusion, splitting them up, I think is a good resolution to the situation that we had. It's, you know, the utmost importance to keep the, you know, the town employees safe in this time. I know, I talked to Chief Gallagher a couple of days ago. He said they've all been given a thermometer. So at the beginning of every day, the employees are tested. And if they're under a hundred degrees, you know, then they're, you know, they're not suffering any effects. And they're also given a paper to fill out for tracing in case something does happen to be able to go back. So, you know, I think that, that the work that Mr. Gaspar did with the Chop Stewarts from the DPW has come out just fine. And I've seen that the, the union Chop Stewarts from the DPW have signed off on this. So I see no reason that, you know, the board doesn't accept it.
Um, yeah. So I, I, conceptually, I agree with the idea of adding the DPW into, into two teams. And I, I'll use that term teams, that, you know, we, we keep the same group of people together so that we've got, you know, I guess nine employees, that we've got a group of five and a group of four that wouldn't potentially affect each other. And so you don't have a group of nine that's at risk. You've got a group of five at risk and a group of four at risk. I, I guess I get that conceptually. I struggle a little bit with the fact that the only way to, to do that is to, to do it one week on, one week off. And I, I guess we'd, you know, early on, we'd, you know, been asking Mr. Menard to give us a plan for, you know, how can, how can we accomplish this and how can we have two crews and how can we make that work? And, you know, came back with the one week on, one week off. And I, I, I struggle that that's the only solution. I think, you know, I think there should be a way to do that without, without, you know, having people sitting at home doing nothing for a week. And that, that's my biggest struggle, that, you know, we talked about it, you know, the feedback we got was, you know, that we've got, we've got, we've got one loader and, you know, you can't split one loader between two crews. But, you know, I, I really feel like there are so many jobs. You know, I'd love to have nine guys in my yard doing projects. And it just, it just seems to me that in the town of Acushnet, you can find things for nine guys to do that would, and, you know, as I, you know, what, what could, you know, you know, trash pickup around the town, grass cutting, tree pruning, street sign replacement, even work at the, even work at the school grounds. It just feels that landscaping, that there are tasks we could put on the workers of the Department of Public Works that would keep them isolated from each other, that would allow them to, you know, be productive during the time that they're getting paid rather than being paid to sit at home. So I, you know, I, I share the, you know, I share the goal of isolating them from each other. But I don't understand why the only way to do that is to be one week on, one week off. I, I struggle with that. And again, I just, I just feel like there are so many, I get the loader example. We've got one loader, but, you know, the, the people that would be sitting home, there's got to be some, you know, trash detail. And I know that's not their typical assignment, but it's an opportunity to do things that, you know, or get them in Pope Park, landscaping, tree pruning, jobs that typically isn't time to do. Let's do it. And that feels like a better solution and a better use of their time and a better use of our resources as a community than saying, sit at home, do nothing. We want to keep you safe. That's all I got. Speaking as someone who's been coming in the office every day for the, you know, I'm, I'm, we're, we're, we're considered essential. We're at work, you know, we're, we're getting it done and, you know, and keep, and keeping ourselves safe. But, you know, I work with a group of people every day and we all, we all come in and we all keep our distance and, you know, I'm sensitive, I'm sensitive to the risk. We're all sensitive to the risk, but it just feels like there's a way to accomplish it all without saying you can sit at home for a week doing nothing and we'll pay you to keep you safe. That's all I got.
You make some valid points, Roger, for sure. You truly do. But we have a situation that exists, and this is a, may not be the best solution to it, but it is a solution for the time being. You know, because I, I understand what you're saying. You, you know, we discussed this, like, the recycling center, the situation that arose from that and how...
Yeah, we agreed on how that should be handled.
Was that?
We agreed on how that should be handled.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, but we know how it turned out.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I know. Yes, I know.
You know.
I know this isn't, I mean, this isn't an issue. This is not an issue for the Board of Health. And I, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll make the further point. I'll make the further point. You know, I, I had a conversation with, with Mr. Menard about this issue. The days, the days blur. I guess it was at the end of the week last week. And I had a conversation with, with, with Mr. Menard about this issue and, you know, suggested that I, I, you know, I didn't love that idea of the week on, week off, and I probably made that clear. And, you know, the next thing I know that there's a memorandum of understanding endorsing that very idea. And I, I, I'll say this, Mr. DeRoche, and I suspect you know that it's true, that if I brought the idea of the DPW working one week off and one week on, and it was my idea, not that I support it, but if I had brought it in as my idea, it never would have been done. And I, I'll, I, I will, I will say that here and now, and that is the truth, and you know that to be the truth. I don't endorse the concept. I'm surprised that it's coming forward in this form because I find this unacceptable for a lot of reasons. I'll outline those reasons. But I just, I don't understand why this would be considered acceptable when there are, there are so many other ways we could do this.
Well, I think the overwhelming situation that we have is we don't want to have the DPW go down.
Agreed, absolutely.
Like ten people, you know, I mean, when you start talking, you know, there's, we're always going to have in this pandemic, there's peoples of comfort are being stretched. And, and we saw that with the situation with the recycling center. You know, we had one, one opinion, you know, that was strong and, but it didn't fly. And, and now we come upon a situation where we got fourteen, or ten people, I should say. You know, if they all go down, because, you know, as well as I do, if one person becomes ill with this, with this COVID-19, we have to shut down the DPW for two weeks because these people have all come in contact with each other. So, you know, I hear your point with the two days on, two days off. People are not going to be sitting at home for a week. I understand that. But then we bring in the situation of now, you know, double the cleaning, you know, jobs maybe being finished, maybe not being finished in a timely manner.
How about, how about two guys, here's two guys, put them in a truck and say, your job is Pope Park cleanup, is street cleanup, is, is landscaping at the school, is landscaping at the park, is...
No, but I...
And, and here's your, here's your truck. Only two allowed in this truck.
Yeah, no, no, I hear you.
And Mr. Menard's not, Mr. Menard's not here. Maybe Mr. Menard can comment on that. I know we've got one loader, but we've got other trucks, I would assume.
If I can. I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I think if Dan were on the, the Zoom meeting right now, he would be able to answer a lot of that for you. You and I both had conversations with him last week. And he had justification, you know, he brought up the loader for that. I don't know what other equipment we have available to do things like mowing, you know, and I, I'm gonna, how I take it is, my department head has looked at these issues. He's let us know that this is his best suggestion for how to accomplish everything that the department needs to accomplish while keeping the employees safe. You know, I don't know every in and out of their department, but he does. And so that's coming from him, you know, with, with, again, whatever equipment they have. And I'd also add that there are no right answers when it comes to this pandemic. Everybody...
Agreed, agreed.
Every town is in this boat. We're all problem solving and trying to get creative and come up with the best answers we can, but there are no good answers. There are no right answers. And I will say other towns have done the same one week on, one week off set schedule. Some have done two days and two days. It's all complex. Again, there's, there's no right or wrong answer. No one's really found the winning and all be all. So I understand your point. You and I both made the same point before. But I think at this point, we need to do something. We need to protect our employees. And again, if, it, it would be a real travesty if we didn't do something like this and, and our whole DPW was out for two weeks, you know, on a quarantine. So I think this is a good solution. Could there be a better one out there? Maybe. But we haven't found it. I don't know what it is, you know? We haven't found it, so I guess I'll leave you with that. You know, everyone's in this same boat.
I don't think the others, I don't think the others were proposed, I guess, is what, is what I'd say. So, you know, I suspect, I suspect if, leave that. With the two of us, Mr. DeRoche, I, I, I get the feeling you're for it. Very honestly, I'm clearly not, so...
Well, Roger, I mean, maybe, you know, we just have to think about it this way. Look, we give them two days on, two days off. After two or three weeks, they're getting the same amount of time off that we're paying them. I, I don't think there's any disadvantage in the sense that, whoa, they're getting more time off from one, one solution or the other solution.
Yeah, I don't think it's the time, it's the time, I, I don't, I'm not necessarily sure it requires a modified work schedule. I think, I think this, the work schedule can remain what it is and just find a way to keep them separated. Again, I, I could, I'd love to have nine guys working in my yard. I think if you disperse nine guys in groups of two around the town of Acushnet or whatever, we could find a way to keep them busy and, and, and find a way to improve our community and...
Well, we've taken, we've taken, and, you know, I mean, it's, this is a difficult time. We've had to make a decision. It's that, you know, you know, I'm not a hundred percent with everything, you know? I mean, I don't know how to describe it, but, you know, we got to go by, you know, we got to make a decision and, and go by it and see how it turns out. You know, the, the time on and off, once again, it's going to come out to be the same, whether they do it five days on, two days on, and, and I hear your point, you know? Well, there's got to be something for them to do. We've taken the position, you know, we need to keep the workers health forefront. That, that is important, you know? As much as, you know, we're paying people for not working, yes, I understand that. We've instituted some policies at town hall where people are rotating their, their schedule, and we've accepted that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a solution to the situation that we can move on from. Hopefully, this doesn't last more than another month, you know? So people are getting a couple of weeks off. We'll be a couple of weeks behind with the DPW, you know? I'm assuming these, you know, the DPW is gonna, you know, appreciate us making an effort to keep their safety and health and well-being, you know, forefront. So, you know, it's all going to play out in the end. I can't say we're right doing it. I can't say we're wrong doing it. It's, it's a decision that I'm okay with making and moving on to the next situation that we're going to have, wherever it may be, wherever it may lie. So, that's, that's that. So, and...
Like, I, yeah.
Has the DPW already implemented this plan? They have. They started yesterday.
So, so this is, again, Mr. Gaspar is not, isn't on this meeting, but over the weekend when we did the MOA, there were a consensus of the two selectmen, obviously, Mr. Gabriel. Mr. Gabriel didn't have consensus. And as part of the, you know, the new rulings that have come out for us with open meeting law, it's been adjusted a little bit. So we were able to kind of temporarily approve that. The ruling says that at your next meeting, you should then put it forth to the public so that they can hear what you did while you were off session. And so that's what we're doing here. So I'm not really, I'm not really sure, you know, Kevin isn't here to give his vote, but he, he did have a vote in the positive for it. So it kind of made this a little bit more fun.
Okay, so we're breaking new ground here, then. I, I, you know, I would say, based on where we are, that this gets, that this gets tabled for the next meeting. You know, I don't know what the new rules are, but I, I do not endorse this concept. I think there's a, there's a better plan. I very honestly don't like the way this was done. And I, so that, those are my final comments on it. So I don't think it is, in, in open session, in open session with the, with the two members of the Board of Selectmen here, I don't think we've got the ability to get a motion in a second. So I would propose we put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And it may well be voted at that point. But at this point, I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting it.
Well, we gotta show some, some position on this issue, in the sense, they've already implemented it. They're, they're working. I mean, we tell them to go back to full crew now, you know, I mean, that's right, between you and I, we're, you know, we can't come to a consensus, we can't have a vote on it, I understand that. But as, you know, after this meeting, we're gonna have to tell the DPW something, that they're gonna have to either keep working like this for this week, you know, the next meeting, I don't know when the next meeting is, is that next week, or two weeks, or three weeks?
Like, I'd like, I'd like another plan, Mr. DeRoche. I, I would like another plan. I don't, I don't like the plan that's been put forward. I would like another plan, very honestly. I, I, you know, I get the fact that this thing was negotiated by a selectman who would like it to be the plan that was implemented. But I wasn't involved in those discussions. And we're now here in a meeting, and opened, and I'm telling you what I think. I think, I think there's a better, I think there's a better way. I think there's another way.
Well, could be. I mean, we're all informed of what was happening as far as like.
And I've expressed my, I've expressed my disapproval every time Ms. Hebert called me. I made it clear that I, I did not endorse that plan. We've not spoken, we've not spoken about it. I've not spoken with Mr. Gasper about it. But, you know, through, through Ms. Hebert, I suspect that Mr. Gasper and you both knew that I didn't endorse this plan. And, you know, if it's, if it's gotta be voted, I'm not in favor of voting for it tonight. So, don't know what the legalities are. But I think in open session, as a Board of Selectmen, there were two of us here, and we can't approve it.
Well, as, as you know, there's three of us, and sometimes it comes down to two to three. I mean, we've had.
Often comes down two to three.
Right. Sometimes, I mean, this year, we've had some situations come, some big issues that have come out that it's been two to, you know, two to one, I should say, out of the three of us. So, you know, we all have to accept that sometimes, you know, we're the one instead of the two.
Then let's, then we'll, we'll bring it, we'll pick it, we'll bring it back, we'll put it on the next agenda, and I'll, I'll be the one.
Well, right now, we're at a stalemate. So, you know, we can bring it back. I would, right now, I, I take the position that the DPW can follow what they've implemented on Monday, until we can come to a conclusion of this whole issue.
Okay, agreed. Okay. New business item two, temporary warrant signing under 4156. Ms. Hebert?
Okay, so this is just, again, as everything's progressing, we're getting new information from DLS. 4156 is a section that was already in place from before, essentially where any board could appoint, as a group, could nominate one person to be their authorized signatory. So even, you know, if this weren't happening, you know, and they said, all right, Roger, you're gonna be our authorized signatory, the other two selectmen wouldn't have to come in to sign the warrants. Your signature would authorize the majority's approval.
Does it need to be a signature? It can be an email communication as well, I believe, is, is what I read.
Yeah. So that's kind of, that's part of like, the new, the new piece of it, is that they're saying, we all hope that this would be really temporary. But now it's seeming like this could drag out for a lot longer. And knowing that we need signatures for warrants, signatures for other things as well, that that's where DLS kind of gave some guidance, and they made some updates to it to be more lenient. So we could do a signature, but we could also do an email back. So again, if Roger, if you were appointed to be the authorized signatory for the board, we could send you a PDF of the list for the warrant. You could write back and just say, yep, I approve.
Imagine what that looks like, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, your, your email back saying, I approve it, would.
With the exact reference of the warrant number is what I saw.
Yep. So you have to, first, we would have to vote to have a designee for the board. And then the next part is that, yep, you would get a copy of the warrant with a picture of the signature page. The signature has to, the signature page has to identify the warrant. And the important thing is to ensure that the warrant being approved is clearly identified in whatever the designee is approving or signing, for example, the warrant date and number. And then the new rules also require that the members shall make available to the board committee or other department head at the first meeting following such action, a record of such action. So you would have to let them know at the next meeting, I approved these warrants.
Mr. DeRoche, do you want to take on that role? Would you be willing to do that?
I'm open to it. I can still go in and sign them if they're there, correct?
You can.
Okay. And just one signature will carry the, carry.
Signature will carry. I, I, I mean, I would, I would suggest that you try not to go in, that, and I've said this a couple of times, that we, we, none of us should go into Town Hall to the extent we can avoid it. And, you know, we, we kind of talk both sides of this COVID thing, we gotta keep people apart, yet we're bringing ourselves together. So, you know, I would suggest that the selectmen, as well as, you know, that we insulate ourselves from Town Hall as well. So to the extent we can do it via email, we try to do that.
That would be fine also. No, no qualms with that at all.
Okay. I would make a motion to appoint Mr. DeRoche as the signatory for temporary warrant signing authority under 4156. And I guess you'd second that motion, Mr. DeRoche.
Well, second the motion, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. All right.
I just want to make sure I check all the numbers, though, right?
And then there's. Every single, every single one, like we always do, like we, like we always do. We check every invoice against the line item on the, on the printout.
What is coming back, I mean, in a year from now.
All right. Moving on, Department of Public Works, City of New Bedford, water rates, looks like water and sewer rates went up, cost, it's cost of living adjustment, looks like about two and a half percent each.
Yep.
Would, what did, what did we, when we had talked about increases, what did we say cost of living was? We were about there as well, weren't we?
True, yeah.
We rounded.
Yeah, it was around 2.3, and we had rounded it down to two.
Okay. All right. So they're, they're two point, I get, like, 2.5-ish is not out of line with reality.
Right.
Right. Our increase covers this increase, correct? I mean, we're within.
We vote this? If we don't vote this, we turn off the water and sewer, I guess, right?
We don't have to vote it tonight. So I talked to the DPW, she's still gathering information. When you, when she determines the new rates for next year, that's something you would have to vote on. But as of right now, she's still getting all the numbers together. Wanted to let you know that at this point, it's looking like a two and a half percent increase.
Yeah, okay.
Um, all right. There's also something here for water sewer bills.
I think we can pass over that one.
Pass over that one, okay. Town administrators report?
The only thing I have on here is just, just a thank you. The Council on Aging had reached out to Selectman Gasper, and let him know that they wanted to thank the EMA, the police, and the fire EMS. They've been helping them deliver the meals on wheels. And they greatly appreciate all the work that they've done, and helping them get those meals to people in a cushionet. So just wanted to extend a thank you from the COA. And that's all I have for administrators reports.
Thank you. Selectmen announcements, anything, Mr. DeRoche?
Don't destroy your trash, all those plastic trash bags, I mean, the plastic grocery bags, throw them in the trash. That's all I gotta say. Save the town some money.
The next meeting is Tuesday, April 21st, at 5 o'clock, unless we need to come together for anything. Otherwise, what, what kind of agenda are you building, Ms. Hebert? Any, anything, a couple of things be deferred to future, future meetings?
Yep, we have some things to talk about today. I know we'll have a Comcast update for the, it's kind of been on the back burner a little bit with everything else going on. Do you want to plan on, on a weekly meeting? I know we, we have the MOA that we might want to discuss again. Do you want to plan on something for next week, even if it's just a short meeting to go through a few, few items remotely?
Yeah, I have no problem.
Yeah, if we can do, if we can do it remotely, absolutely.
Yeah, this is, this is a very.
I like this better than meeting you all in person. I like this better. Do you want, do you want to do the 14th?
Yeah, if that works, if that works for you guys. I, I wouldn't mind having it on just to, you know, cover a few of these updates. We, you know, we have, again, some information that I want to get out to you, that the state's passed on, you know, extending the due date for tax bills from May 1st to June 1st, deferring interest and penalties, as long as payments are made by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. So we definitely have a few things that I think we could put on there that would be more time sensitive. And if we could meet next week, that would be helpful.
Okay, so I've got it for the 14th at 5:00 PM?
Perfect.
Julie, quick question, you mentioned deferring the tax bills. Is that something that's realistic and doable for us? Or is that?
Yeah. So, so this would just be from the, the fourth quarter, that's due May 1st, moving it to June 1st at the latest. So right now, a lot of the, the information that they've passed is still requiring payments to be made by the end of the fiscal year. So we can vote to, again, defer interest and penalties if you say, if you make your payment June 15th, and the due date has been moved to June 1st. We can forego any interest or penalties, but you have to make your payment by June 30th, or that would, it would come back on. You know, they want to make sure, again, we talked about revenues, the town needs to have cash flow. And, and taxes are, are very dependable sources of revenue for the town, because you ultimately have to pay at some point. But we don't, we, we also can't afford for everyone to be like, all right, well, we'll, we'll pay it six months down the road. The town has a cash flow that we need to maintain. But they are looking at, you know, trying to be helpful to residents who may be going through, you know, job loss, or any other kind of economic instability, and trying to give as much, as much flexibility as we can, while making sure we can still get our cash, cash flow, our money. And so these are things that they've been looking at. And I definitely want to get it to you. But I want to make sure you guys have all the information to review beforehand.
Right. Because I, you know, we all, Roger, myself, we see the, Roger and myself, we see the warrants, you know, $600,000 every two weeks for salaries. When you talk about cash flow, it'll be flowing out the door quickly. So.
Yeah, exactly.
I like, I do like the concept of, and we talked about, you know, water shut offs, sewer shut offs. I think we need to find a way to waive the usual late fees, waive the usual rules for the residents. We get a lot of people in tough situations right now. And I, I think we need to find a way to be more patient with our usual rules. And, you know, eventually get ourselves back to normal. But I don't think we should, I think we should be relaxing whatever penalties are normally associated with a late payment of real estate taxes. I think we should suspend water shut offs. I think all of those things, you know, hopefully, we don't have people abusing that. But we want to get it back to normal soon. But, you know, for the near term, whatever that means, I think we need to relax, you know, what the usual rules have been. You're agreeing with that.
Yep.
And that's the, the shut offs in, you know, for the water, well, not sewer, but for the water, that is something that's discussed in the legislation too, to, you know, not do any kind of shut offs, to extend the penalties and interest for water and sewer, and any other, you know, enterprise kind of user fee as well. So we're all thinking on the same page.
All right. Anything else?
No, make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion. For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.